Morning, everyone. This is the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It's Monday, August 4th. The time is 9:00 a.m. Let's open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the ring of the British Union, one nation under our, in the visible, in the routine, in the justice court.
Thank you. Ed, could you call the roll, please? Commissioner Reagan. Commissioner Brand. Here. Commissioner Henry. Here. Okay, we'll start out with Employee of the Month. Thank you. So we have two nominations this month, one for the County Building and one for the Justice Center. We'll start with the County Building nominee. They were nominated by the Auditor's Office, Ed Carroll and Tanya Dunsmore, and the Employee of the Month is Kami Mitchell. So if Tanya or Ed, if you could approach the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Excuse my attire. I'm on vacation, but I wanted to be here to present this to Kami because she sets the bar as an ideal employee. If I could just read what I wrote, it'd be easier. And the reason for her, her great work ethic is her attitude, attendance, communication, work ethic, desire and ability to learn, leadership qualities, dependable, efficiency, and prompt. So those are the basics, but a little bit more detail. Kami had previously worked in medical field before staying, being a stay-at-home mom for years and wanted to get back into the workforce, but in an office setting. She was very shy and nervous, but very eager to learn. She just wanted a chance to prove herself. That she did. We told her in her interview that we were looking for someone who could work mostly by theirself, be very well organized, and take on tax cell department as their own. With the help of very knowledgeable previous part-time employee, she has absolutely transformed the tax cell department. She has fully trained another employee who is just as tedious and now is currently training our IU intern who will help out with our upcoming deed cell. Kami has a strong work ethic in all areas, personality, appearance, attitude, presence, timeliness, accuracy, and efficiency. She is also busy at home with a teenage daughter who cheerleads and plays basketball. We can count on Kami in every aspect, and we could not ask for a better employee. And this just touches my heart because I know how she came into our office, and I know what she has tried to do, and she has done it.
Thank you. You're welcome to make comments, Kami, if you'd like.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The second Employee of the Month at the Justice Center was nominated by Mary Addison, and it is Delaware County Sheriff's Office Employee Danny Rets is the Employee of the Month.
Jeff Hanser, Chief Probation Officer, here to present on behalf of Officer Addison. The whole juvenile probation department really concurred with this recommendation to nominate Rets for Employee of the Month over the end of spring, end of the summer. You know, a lot of people may not know this, but when we have juveniles that have acute psychiatric problems or can't be safely transported by less restricted means, the Sheriff's Department assists us with that. Captain Dai and his team, very accommodating, work with us, collaborate, communications great. But at the end of the day, transport officers got to take these kids to DOC or to acute psych placements, and it can be an interesting ride, to say the least. And we had several of those that kind of happened simultaneously, probably outside the typical transport that the Sheriff's Department deals with. And Rets really stepped up in that role and facilitated those transports safely. I know a couple of them had to stop a couple times and get some backup, but we really, at the end of the day, he stepped up, got the kids where they needed to be, where they can get help. And, and he was a big part of dealing with that and helping to ensure those juveniles got to where they needed to be in a safe manner. So we just wanted to recognize him and tell him how much we appreciate you for your help with that.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thanks to both of you, and we appreciate your hard work. Thank you. Next, we have Board of Health, Commissioner Brand.
Yeah, Board of Health update. There, we have multiple nominees now, which is good news, and they are in front of the Delaware County Board of Health. Their next meeting is on August 14th, and I hope that they have recommendations for the Commissioners following that meeting. On the Civic Center Authority Board, no status change. Reminder that we reappointed Scott Alexander and David Hanauer at the last meeting. We did not reappoint Cherish Howe. She asked to not be reappointed due to some of her evening conflicts, which is when, or meeting conflicts, which is when some of these meetings happen. So we're, we're holding with that right now. And then on the Fair Board, we have one person who has been volunteering at the fairgrounds, coordinated the Touch a Truck event that was held on Community Night on Monday night since we didn't have a midway running. Did a great job there. I've made the President of the Fair Board aware, and that is Danielle Castle. That's the only volunteer that I have that's willing to step onto the board.
And I believe we have a few more appointments, and Mr. Johnson's getting our app on our webpage. I believe it's on, up and running. So we do hope all of our friends out there that would like to serve us would look over our list of 25 boards, see what they're interested in. And I'll second that motion for.
So you put it in a motion?
Yes, I've made a motion to appoint Danielle Castle to Fair Board.
They had quite a success.
Ed, do you have that?
Yes.
So we have a motion and a second to approve Mr. Castle?
Ms. Danielle Castle.
Ms. Okay, yes. Rule call, please. Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Next, under Table Business, we have the Solar Moratorium. Entertained a motion to remove that from the table.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Good. Yeah, quick update from my side. We've had several communications with a couple of the developers. Hawthorne, which is what they call the Albany Project, it's really around the drag strip, had some communication with Ben Friedel, also had some communication with Christina Blunt, now Geronimo Energy, was National Grid Renewables, that's the Rorton Project, as well as I attended a League of Women Voters meeting last week where they brought some folks in from Randolph County, presented some of the tax impacts and revenue impacts to Randolph County. Also, Holocene Clean Energy continues to be extremely interested in our brownfields, two of them inside the city limits, one at the county, and we're working with them on understanding what their taxes would be. So I've involved the Auditor's, or I'm sorry, the Assessor's Office, Mr. Carmichael, trying to get clarification on what their taxes would be on the land under panel and then on the land not under panel. So I think that's very encouraging that we have a company that really is interested in our brownfields. Again, one of them is the Old Delco Battery Site, that's under the control of the county. And then the two inside the city limits, one's the Old Borg Warner on 32, and the other one is the, what's in the racer trust now, which used to be Chevrolet Muncie on 8th Street. You know, those sites haven't had any activity in a long time, very little interest, although they've changed hands a couple times. So I'm really encouraged about the Holocene Clean Energy involvement and interest.
All right, motion to return to the table? So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next, we have the IU Health Master Agreement. I make a motion to remove it from the table.
Second.
Have a motion to remove that and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Pam, do you have an update?
Yes, we are looking into, it says slash Marathon. We are looking into another clinic, and we had a meeting the other day, and I thought it was very successful and very promising. So that's where we're at right now. But as far as the IU Master Agreement, we've not done anything with that, so.
All right. Pam's right. The, I attended the meeting as well. The new clinic, the Marathon Clinic, does look, look pretty good. I think it would be a cost savings to the county. I want to review that information a little further and address that at a later time. I believe, I believe it was stated in the meeting that the city either is moving over or has signed a contract.
They have already moved over.
Yes, they've signed a contract with Marathon, so I found that interesting as well. So, but I want to review that further, so.
Okay.
Anybody have any comments?
So Pam, we received an email on July 24th from Abby to you asking for clarification on the fee-for-service agreement. Have you given her a response yet?
I'm sure I have. I don't have it in front of me, but I.
Okay. So this is basically the last ditch effort with IU Health to see if they have any alternative that improves the quality of service.
She did respond to me, Stephen, and I don't know, I can send you her response. I'm surprised I didn't, but.
Yeah. If she gave you a separate response, I haven't seen it. So I'm copied on this and you. She was asking you for clarification about, basically, she said, are we understanding correctly that you desire a fee-for-service care model with cost savings at the employer level?
Okay. That's, that's the email that I'm.
Okay.
But yeah.
So we owe her an answer on this?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I was unable to attend the Marathon meeting, but I have looked through the presentation. It does look encouraging. I would, I do want to review it further and make sure that we're not degrading the quality of service.
I agree.
We want a better service for a better price.
I think maybe a couple of us need to go out and tour the place, too.
Where's it located?
I think it's out in Lindport.
Yes.
No, it's not.
Well, it's back in there around Knights Columbus. Where's all that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, it is back there. Yeah.
Yeah. While I'm up here, I, it was in your packet this morning. I have an authorization for release, protected the health information from me to sign, but I need your okay to do that. This letter that I gave the three of you, just, it just releases the health benefits information to McGriff.
Is this what's on the agenda for?
Yes.
Side of number eight on the agenda today?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
I think, was that digital signature?
Yeah, I think it was. It would be a hard copy because Jenna put it on our county letterhead.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Do you want to handle that right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we can go ahead and send.
I have to go. The only reason I did that is because I have to go back to the office and work on.
Yeah, so we have, we have a letter on the agenda from TrueRx. We need to send it to Ourx, letting McGriff talk to them and collect documentation from them.
That's right. It's for TrueRx and VSP, which is our vision service provider. And the reason we need this is there was uncovered to be a per, per prescription fee agreement with Apex.
Correct.
That wasn't previously understood by us, and these two companies want official release from us to McGriff. So this makes McGriff the agent of record and Marsh McLennan Agency Company for Vision Service and TrueRx. I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve that letter and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
I will go back and sign this and get this to, in the proper hands.
Okay, thank you.
And give a copy to the Auditor's Office.
Yes.
Let's, let's, I entertain a motion to put that back on the table. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes, thank you. Next, we have approval of the minutes for the Commissioner meeting, July 21st, 2025. Did everyone get a chance to look at the minutes, I think?
Yes, and.
There was some corrections sent as well.
I know. I'll go ahead. You probably got.
I did send some corrections, and the updated minutes are here, and they have all my corrections.
Okay.
Do you have anything, Dad? Commissioner Reagan. Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to approve the minutes and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. All right, next, under Presentations, we have the roadway, right-of-way dedication. Ashton Land Surveyors.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Kathy Van Ice, and I'm from Ashton Land Surveyor. I have actually three of them that I'm going to be talking to you about. The first one, I'm going to bring back up the Phillips plat. That is where we have gone ahead and gotten approval for the Phillips property to be divided. This property is located at 8820 East Jackson Street, Selma. It is where if we follow the thoroughfare plan, the house would be inside property that would be dedicated to the Commissioners. And I, we have worked with the area planning, and they have come up with a letter that I'm going to be asking that you be willing to waive your rights or to not have any additional land dedicated to the Commissioners so that, so that Mr. Phillips can still own his house that was built in 1903. The, the thoroughfare plan, like I said, is, this is only, there is already land that's owned by the state of Indiana. This is on Highway 32. State of Indiana does own the right-of-way. This would be additional land between the edge of right-of-way, and it would take the front 15 feet of his house. So that's what we're asking. I know that area planning has drafted a letter, and they will be asking you to sign, but I want to make sure it's on your records today and that you'd be fine with it.
So you want to have any questions?
So this does take a portion of the Phillips property?
It will take.
But they can still own and stay in their house?
I didn't hear you.
They can, they can still own and stay in their house?
Yes, they can still own and still be, it already has this Highway 32's right-of-way that's been acquired by the state of Indiana. There will be no additional land taken. And he will have, his house will be fine.
Gotcha. No, we're not taking any additional land. This falls well within the end dots right-of-way.
Right.
I understand. The homeowner's, homeowner's good with all this, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Hate the plan commission, you know. I'm good.
Compared to what we originally thought, we thought we were going to get like halfway into his front, front room.
Yes. You were going to get part of his home.
Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to approve the request and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next one?
The next one's at 5900 South Burlington. Burlington is a major road. We will be, we are dedicating the roadway right-of-way for a property that's under PNP subdivision. It's one of them that would be in your packet. There should be two others, but this one, we are dedicating the road right-of-way for right along Burlington, so we can plat that property.
That's two separate parcels, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
They're separating the house and barn into one parcel, and then the other, they're planning on having a house built on.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Just clarify, this is P and a P acres.
Correct. I'm sorry. Yep.
Okay. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve this request and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Third one. Sorry, I am that person today. Moller subdivision, and it's on 700 North. It's 9661 East County Road 700 North. This is a minor road. The reason we have to plat is it's zoned R2. R2, you have to, anything under five acres, you have to plat. So we are in the process of platting. We're going to be dedicating the road right-of-way along the front of that one-lot subdivision, and it is a small little division of just about an acre.
Off 700 North, correct?
Yes, off 700 North.
Anyone have any questions?
I do not.
Charlie, do you have any questions?
No. I trust them.
Entertained a motion for approval? So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to approve this request and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Gordon Cox, presentation about some Yorktown land. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm here today to ask the favor of having you return to me some property which I donated to you.
Sir, please state your name and address, please, for the record. Your name and address.
Yes, Gordon Cox, Field Box 158 Yorktown.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm asking you to return some property I donated to the county Commissioners back several years ago for the construction of an EMS fire station sub and a police station sub on 600 West. It has not been developed, giving me access to 600 for my property, which I can't develop until I get some property back to get out access to 600.
How long ago did you give that to the county? How long ago did you give that to the county?
Oh, gosh, 15 years ago.
That was when Station 2 was built, I'm guessing, yeah. Yeah. Anyone have any questions?
So, right now, you don't have access. Do you own that field behind it?
No, the access is at the end of that state highway property, which now is in your hands, and being, you didn't develop it, and I didn't have that right-of-way, which was supposed to be in access.
Gotcha. And you need it back because you're trying to develop the property behind it?
Yes.
I understand. So Danielle?
Yes.
What's the process? I mean, can we legally just give property to an individual citizen?
So we're going to have to go through the actual full process that we normally go through in disposing of real estate. So I can get that outline for you guys, but we have to go through the actual process of doing that.
Okay, Mr. Gordon, there's a process for the Commissioners to convey real estate, and, and we will get that process in your hands. I'm assuming that Julie, you, you know what that looks like, and we'll, we'll get that to you and walk through the process. But basically, it puts it out for a public bid. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, and I can send them some information. If you want to afterwards, leave me your email address, and I can give you some information on how that works.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, make a motion to table this.
Second.
Yeah. Have a motion to table this request and a second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next, we have contracts and agreements for approval. We have the multi-hazard mitigation plan. EMA Director John Cino.
Good morning, Commissioner John Cino, Emergency Management Director. We reported, I reported last December, I think, I brought to you guys for approval, the multi-hazard mitigation plan. It was signed and approved by you guys. It was approved by the state as well, but then it had to go to FEMA. FEMA kicked it back for some verbiage changes that Augusta, or not, excuse me, not Augusta, excuse me, Fanch Point Consulting took care of for us, sent it back to FEMA, and it has now been approved by FEMA. So at this point, I just want to give an update on that plan, and now we will be going out to the small towns that participated and have them adopt this as their multi-hazard mitigation plan as well. So.
Very good. Any questions? Any questions?
If there's a small town that did not participate, but they would like to see it or use it, how's that work?
They, they can get a copy of it from me as well. Yeah, absolutely.
They could adopt it as well, correct?
They can adopt that as well. So it's just the information that was provided during our meetings was that of the towns that participated. So they may not have anything specific to their town in the plan, but it will still fall into the county's guidance.
And then you're still working to co-mingle this or consider the, there's a migration and a commodity study that's being done in parallel?
A commodity flow study is being conducted right now. So I should have that hopefully by the end of September, I think they said.
Okay.
So now we partner with this plan as well, and that'll go out to all the jurisdictional fire departments and police departments for their planning purposes.
And that commodity study basically shows people what's coming in and out of our county in terms of hazardous material or non-hazardous material?
Absolutely, on the roadways and the railways. So we got, we made contact with Norfolk Southern and CSX, who sent us their commodity flow studies for the past 12 months, which is the scary stuff. So, but yeah, it'll all be included in that plan as well.
Okay.
Any questions?
Appreciate all your work on that.
Thank you.
I know it's time-consuming, but thank you.
Yeah, but we're good. We're good for five years, so.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have the Baird. Yep, Commissioner Brand?
Yep, thank you. So there's a, a letter. It's basically a managing underwriter, or you could call him a placement agent, either whatever terminology you want to use. This makes Baird basically our agent of record for bond underwriting. I believe Baird has done the last six or seven bonds for Delaware County anyway. And the purpose of this is to work along with, in coordination with the Auditor's Office, the Treasurer, and the County Council, and to restart our strategic investment and finance committee. We would need to, we would need to enter into an agreement with Baird or somebody like Baird, and then they will work in concert with our current municipal advisor, which is Baker Tilly. We would develop a comprehensive financial plan, which is required, a capital improvement plan, which would be required. And then we have some policies that we can adopt. They're very standard, but we don't have those policies. So we do a really good job of managing the money and investing it properly, but we don't have a policy that says we do it. And if we can just put a policy in place, which I'll put in front of the Commissioners here shortly, not, not in this meeting, but in the future, it will improve our ability to borrow money and, and at a reduced rate. And then we'll understand the impacts of Senate Bill Number One. We will address and investigate the existing leases, which I've sent some additional information over on some trucks. I think that were leased for the Highway Department a couple of years back. Then I think it would give us the ability to explore residential TIP districts, which we don't have in the county today. And then we could consider an accrual type audit, which we don't do today. I think it would be better if we could do an accrual type audit of our, our finances. It would also give that level of comfort to our underwriters and improve our bond rating and our ability to borrow money against a strategic investment plan or a comprehensive investment plan. So I'm open to questions.
And the rate was like 1% of the bonding.
That's right. And, and, and they don't get paid until they.
And that's kind of a standard.
It is a standard rate. They all have the same rate. They've, they don't get paid unless we borrow and unless they underwrite the bond.
And I could be wrong, but Mr. Carroll, then a few years ago, we did something like this when Mr. Walker was down there, I believe, helping you get started.
It was similar to this, yes.
And on here, it says chairs and tables. Didn't we have a limit of what we were looking at?
As far as capital?
Yeah.
I believe it's $10,000.
That's what I was thinking. So why they listed vehicles to chairs, I.
I, I think this is just the kind of an overview of what it is. Those are the meetings from the meeting that we had, and the purpose is to conduct a complete asset inventory. And the conversation came up about chairs. Like at the, at 911, they have those very expensive chairs that we lease. We don't own them.
Those are very expensive, I'll say.
Right. So anything over $10,000 would be tracked in a comprehensive asset inventory?
Right. Thank you.
So do you want to take action on this today? What do you want to, I would like to take action on today. Ed, are you, have you had a chance to review everything?
Yes.
On this? Okay, you're, you're in favor of this?
Yeah, I had a conversation with Landon last week.
Okay, what, what about, I don't see Brad in here. Has Brad had a chance to look at it?
Yes, he was in a meeting with us last week. We reviewed this as a committee.
Okay.
And the entire committee had this report here and reviewed it.
And the committee was happy with it?
Yes. Okay. This is the next step in our process as far as the committee goes, is getting either them's on board or a company equivalent to them. But the communication we had with Baird seems to be what the committee wants to go for, so.
Okay. Danielle, have you had a chance to review the contract?
I haven't. I'm on page two of it, though. I haven't, I'm on page two of it, though.
Okay.
On a table.
Well, I would like to make a motion to make Baird our managing underwriter pending the review of legal.
We have a motion to approve pending legal's review. And a second rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have Endot Construction Change Order. Commissioner Brand?
Yep, so this change order is the bridge that's being done by Endot right now on Memorial, same as 12th Street, out near the bypass. The, I guess it would be the East Apron was, had to be taken up to replace the bridge, and that is right where Butterfield tees into.
On the north side.
Yep, on the north side of the road, thank you. And once they took that up, they realized they weren't gonna just be able to repave it, and it's gonna require a full-depth restoration. So, we asked for the Butterfield Drive entrance reconstruction, $37,000. I asked them about project underruns, of which they predicted about $25,000. That leaves $12,000 total. Since this is a federal highway project, it's done with 80-20 funds, the 20% obligation to the county for the full-depth restoration of Butterfield entrance would be $2,400. So, that's the background. The change order that you have in front of you is change order number six, and it would bring the total change to date to $46,530.92. The previous five were already approved, and this change order is for 35, 35,000. I'm sorry, $31,250.64.
Small print.
Yeah, I had to back up.
Very well.
But, I mean, if we don't do this right now, they could open the bridge, but nobody will be able to get on or off of Butterfield.
We have to do it.
I agree.
You don't have a choice.
I would make a motion to approve change order number six.
Send it.
We have a motion to approve the change order and a second rule call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. All right, we have the BW Facility Maintenance Agreement.
Yep, so what you have in front of you today, commissioners, is a proposal for consideration from BW. BW is the builder that's building the new mental health facility, and I asked them for a proposal if they were to conduct the maintenance. If we conduct the maintenance, we don't have the resources today. We'd have to hire somebody and probably buy some tools and things like that to put in the mental health facility. So, what BW did is they put together a proposal. It's for $5,000 a month or $60,000 a year, and they spell out their sixteen hours a week that they would be onsite doing all the PM. They would supply the materials, and then they have a rate schedule on here for on-call. So, I asked them to also give us an on-call opportunity. If they get called in Monday through Friday, if they get called in on Saturday or Sunday unplanned, or if they have to do work on the weekends planned, that's a lower rate. So, we would need to decide, do we want to hire resources or would we want to go with a management company that built the facility and would manage the warranties? We could sign this for any length of time that we wanted. I wouldn't recommend going beyond a year. And that's what the agreement duration is, and I ask them to only put on there for a year, so we could see if that's what we want to do, so.
Since there's really not any urgency, I would kind of like to table it. I thought it was kind of sketchy on, you know. I can, and I appreciate them being able to come on call, but the maintenance on the inside and the outside, I just thought it was a little sketchy. It wasn't spelled out if we have to hire another maid service or what.
Well, I think we're still in some contractual, we have some contractual questions with the proposed operator of the facility. So, I agree with you, I think we should table this.
We can wait till maybe we've.
Until we figure out what we're gonna do for sure there.
Yeah, thank, but thanks for reaching out to them.
I think it's a good idea, it's a great idea. I just wanted you to consider an, or we can hire our own employees.
Well.
Absolutely, provide benefits and tools.
You know, with, yeah.
I'll second the motion to table.
Thank you.
We have a motion to table this agreement and a second rule call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next is the Imagine 360 Letter. It's authorization for the release of information as well. This is information that would go to McGriff as well, am I correct?
That's correct, yep. So, I360 is the network of healthcare providers that our employees enjoy with the benefits plan that's provided by the county, and this formally gives Marsh McLennan and McGriff approval, and this is required by the HIPAA Act of 1996.
This was the DocuSign one.
This is a DocuSign, so if we approve it in this meeting, we would approve it via Doc, Pam. We're basically approving Pam to sign it via DocuSign.
Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
Send it.
We have a motion to approve, second rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next, we have ordinances. Ordinance Number 2025-13, an ordinance creating a new fund for grant received by emergency management. Director Cino?
Morning, Commissioner John Cino, Emergency Management Director. Uh, this is the grant that I spoke to you guys about and got approval to apply for through Duke Energy. They service about a dozen residents in this, I think, the southern, southeastern part of Delaware County, but they have a grant opportunity that we applied for. It's a $3,000 grant. We're going to purchase weather radios and two wearable personal voltage detectors that we discussed giving to the highway guys who out dealing with downed power lines and trees, so. I just need the ordinance so I can take it to the council and get the money put into the account to buy the equipment.
Are there any questions?
Yeah.
Just clarification, this is a non-reverting fund that we're creating.
Correct.
Okay.
Thanks for your work on it.
Yep, absolutely.
Entertaining motion for introduction?
Send it.
Second.
Do you need this right away?
If we can, yeah. I've got the money coming out.
And that's $3,000, correct? Um, so a motion to introduce and a second rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Do we need to, motion to suspend the rules?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Send it.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and a second rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
I entertain a motion for adoption, Ordinance Number 2025-13.
Send it.
Second. A motion to adopt it and a second rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job. All right, next, we have department heads and elected officials. Do we have any department heads or elected officials that would like to speak?
So, yeah, Commissioners, Tommy Humbert, Delaware County Highway. In the past, we've had some issues with contractors coming in and cutting our roads up after we paved them. Commissioner Brand, Heather and myself went out and met with one of the bosses, supervisors. We explained that in the future, we wanted some better clarification when they were going to dig on roads, and we would try to arrange the paving with that, so that would not happen. So, I get a phone call on Friday from Heather, and Miller Pipeline is wanting to come in on Hoyt Avenue, which is a road that was either paved last year, I think it was end of last year, and there's gonna be several, many, many cuts from Phillips Drive to White Road. And that's probably like, it's a little less than a mile, I think .086 or something like that. It should be on there. Or .86, I'm sorry. So, I haven't really got a chance to research this because it was hit with me like Friday evening and this morning, I started dealing with this. I want Danielle to be aware of this because my advice is, or my way I look at it, we deny this until we find out exactly what's gonna go on, what their fix is gonna be, because we cannot have a whole bunch of patch job down through there on Hoyt Avenue, which is a major, major road out there in that part of the county.
So, we have not issued the right-of-way permit?
No, it's on hold. Heather has it on hold till we, till I or you clear it. And I suggest we keep it on hold till we find out exactly what's gonna happen, plus maybe have some kind of writing from, wording from Danielle of what the fix will be instead of a bunch of patch jobs.
Yeah, Danielle, I think you've done something similar to this in the past, where we write in where we would want them to mill and repave that lane. Are they gonna stay in one lane?
Hey, here's what I'm gonna tell you. See, I don't know the whole answers to that right there, but I'm going to assume it's gonna be both sides of the road, which is gonna create both lanes.
Because our current ordinance requires them to overcut like two feet square and then just patch it. And on a road that was done, you know, seven, eight years ago, that's one thing, but on a road that was done two years ago, I would want them to restore it like we made Center Point Energy restore 600 West.
Absolutely, I agree, that's pretty good. Absolutely, I hope this is just like one that slipped through after we had our talk because, you know, in the future, we're supposed to be aligned with when we pave. You know, they're supposed to give us notice, because they can give us plenty of notice where we would not pave the road. You know, this was in the works way before we paved that road. So, I wanted to bring it to you guys' attention, it was easier to do it this morning this way. It's a problem. Engineering is stepping up, and they are catching this before it does happen.
Yep, good. Appreciate it.
Yep, so I just want to give you guys a heads up on that, whatever. I'll either stay in touch with you all or, you know, but I think right now, I deny it till, or hold it off until we've.
We need more information.
Absolutely, okay, thank you very much.
Get us, get us, have them get some more information, some readable maps.
Okay.
And if they could mark where their cuts are gonna be.
Yeah. Right.
Have them outline where the cuts are.
Pre-mark the cuts, and we'll go out and inspect the cuts, and then we'll talk about how they're gonna be fixed, correct?
Correct, yep.
And that's when we lean on Danielle and John to get the right wording, because I almost feel like we need some kind of legal something for them on that.
Danielle, you can help out with anything we need. Yep.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other department heads or elected officials? Okay, we have the weekly, monthly, we don't have any weekly, monthly reports. We have the payment claims of $3,521,998.74.
I'd like to add something as I was looking at the claims. It would help if Mr. Carroll staff on the second line that we have for descriptions. I would like to have a location or the usage, because we have the invoice, but I just, when I'm looking at electric bills and different ones, if they could do that.
So, you want a usage?
Yeah.
For the utilities?
If it's EMS, Yorktown, or one of, just the location and.
The location of the invoice, yes, and then, and then the usage.
Well, just the, what department?
I got you, okay.
And location, like if it's.
I understand.
One of the EMSs. It just, then we could.
Can we get a better description on that?
Because when I saw them.
Move a look into that.
Thank you, thank you.
It can be hyphenated, it doesn't have to be spelled out.
Commissioner Brand?
I'd make a motion to approve the claims. I would like to explain them if there's a second.
Send it.
So, ends keeper's tax, we distributed $122,193.98 to the Visitors Bureau. Daleville Build Operate Transfer Payment, $95,995.22. Then we had a number of TIF payments, the Progress Rail TIF, about $125,000, the Daleville TIF, about $161,000. Park One, tax increment finance payment of $196,500. MERSX, the New Tucson, there were two of those, one for about $3,300, one for $160,400. NIBO Land Partners, $111,663.42. Morrison TIF, $332,908.75. And the Living Green Farm, bond payment there, bond payment there, $64,000. And then Fountain Square, which is Campac, that's the big one here, $1,219,413.89. And that's a 75% of whatever their revenues are, so that's not 100% agreement with the Fountain Square. I think that's important, important to note. Then there was Edit, Payments Out, $31,701.60. And then, just for all the roads and things that are getting done, I think the department's doing a great job, about $360,000 worth of materials for the roadwork that the County Highway Department's been doing. Reminder to everybody that these are posted online in detail, so if you want to look at the details, you can see them.
Sherri, did you have a note about one? It seemed like you had a note about one.
She did on the Progress Rail. It's.
Yeah, industrial park, yeah.
You were asking about the bank, the bank payments.
Yeah.
You have a question about that?
Well, I've slipped since, so. Yeah. These two totals, I don't know where the totals came from.
Those are the, let me look at it again. Those are the admin fees that we pay to the financial institution to handle the transaction. So, this is the Fountain Square, that was $1,219,413.89. And this is to Old National Wealth Management, which is in Evansville, and then Old National Bank in Evansville. And this is basically $620.53 for them to handle and administer that payment. That's what that $620 is for.
They have the two letters there, the two totals.
Mm-hmm, yeah, part of its interest and part of its principal.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We have a motion and a second for approval, rule call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
No.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next, we have payment of art claims of $10,452.50.
Send it.
Second. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. And we have the payment of payroll for 7/30 to 2025, $1,48,283.25.
Send it.
Second. A motion to pay payroll and a second rule call, please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. All right, we're down to public comments. First one that has signed up, and I will remind everyone, you have three minutes. Brandy Hoff.
Brandy Hoff, 8209 East County Road 350 North. I'm here to ask the board to review what I believe were not impartial statements during the Drainage Board meeting. Mr. Henry joined to visit with a surveyor in response to my neighbor's complaint. He never contacted me or visited my property and only had input from them. At the Drainage Board meeting live on YouTube, Mr. Henry stated that this issue was caused by my building, a berm. During the meeting, Mr. Henry at 13:09 time, in the broadcast, in this case, accused me of just digging a hole with no oversight. He said the pond ordinance is overdue, suggesting I did something wrong, but there are already laws covering this and nearly every other possible occurrence and liability. He says the owner's pasture beside me will overflow and wash out if my pond overflows. These statements favor the complainant and are unfounded. I contacted DNR, and there were no restrictions. I read the Conman Inme Doctrine and multiple Indiana Supreme Court rulings stating that I can block surface water from my property, which in this case would be my pond. The commissioner did not investigate laws prior to going directly to the Drainage Board. The Indiana law requires a 75-foot setback from a county-regulated drain, which I adhere to. I placed my pond shallow in, so if the flooding did occur, it would not be a nuisance to my neighbor. That pasture already takes a substantial amount of surface water into the county drain that cannot handle it. Therefore, I would not create a nuisance, another Indiana law that already exists for ponds. I will not wash out their pasture. This was thought out. I researched existing Indiana laws and civil liabilities, and I adhered to them. This was thought out. I researched existing Indiana laws and civil liabilities and I adhered to them. I reached out to Mr. Henry via email, found on the commissioner's website. I have found, I have provided to you and also in via email and never received response. Two days after he was sent the email, the complaining homeowners moved their gutters. I identified this in that email as one of the many solutions that the homeowner had not taken action on. I can only suspect there was further communication with the homeowner from Mr. Henry. I did not just dig a hole. Mr. Henry is a prior storm drainage board member and this was not impartial because he never sought my input or applicable laws and doctrine. The code of conduct states members and appointees will work for the common good of Delaware County and not for any private or personal interests and will sure, ensure fair and equal treatment to all persons' claims, transactions before the Delaware County Council, Boards, Committees and Commissions. The county commissioner's oath pledged to face faithfully and impartially discharge duties. This was broadcast publicly and I have already been deemed via the internet that I am a poor homeowner and I'm at fault. A simple AI search will find my name and publish minutes. My name is Brandy Hoff and I personally purport that Mr. Henry is responsible also to represent me in a fair and impartial matter and was derelict in his duty to me as a resident of Delaware County. On November eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, Shannon wrote, "You have to look at all angles, abide by the law and do what you believe."
That's your time, miss. Thank you. Next is Cheryl Dawson.
Ah, yes. Hi. Uh, my name's Cheryl Dawson. Um, I live at the corner of State Road twenty-eight and Wheeling Avenue, North and Muncie. Um, I just wanted to give a quick apology today to everyone here as well as anyone listening two weeks ago in the commissioners meeting, either in present here or by streaming online. I was very accusatory and I want to apologize. I was very worried about a line item from the transportation report that's for twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty for Delaware County. And there was a very vague line item that addressed abandoned railroad land um, off of US thirty-five and State Road twenty-eight. And those roads are combined only a short, relatively short distance. And I was only aware of two northbound, southbound railroad lines, the Cardinal Greenway and the land that runs through the middle of my farm and my neighbor's properties as well. And I was very worried also because of the proximity of my property to the, um, proposed Rorten Solar Project along State Road twenty-eight. And I was envisioning transmission lines or something like that on this railroad land. Um, however, Ms. Whackhammer provided, uh, contact info at NDOT and I talked to a nice lady. And it turns out there's a third northbound, southbound former railroad line that crosses US thirty-five, State Road twenty-eight. It's near eight fifty west, which is of course toward I sixty-nine. And, um, and there are people who own that former railroad land as well, but we didn't get into really what's going to be done there. I was just very relieved and I felt badly because I was very accusatory to folks here as well as the county, possibly others in the county. Um, so I just want to offer my sincere apologies for that. Um, and since I still have a little bit, that was my primary goal today, was to apologize for that. But, um, I'd also send emails to, um, Ms. Whackhammer and Mr. Brand about the word occupied, uh, that's in the solar ordinance. And I was hoping folks could consider that. I have three old farmhouses that need work, but they're not, um, dilapidated to the point where they can't be fixed up. And so I, I feel like future tenants or owners of those properties would deserve the greater setback. Um, so I'm asking people to reconsider how they're gonna define occupied. I'm actually living in two of my houses right now, so.
That, that's time. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, uh, I have, uh, Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Reagan, do you have anything?
Well, yes. Um, I was talking to Mr. Carroll today that we really need to work on. And he has a committee that he can get together to, um, empty our storage units. Would you like to explain that, Ed? What, what all you have to do to throw something away?
Yeah, we actually have to submit to the, the local committee of anything we want to dispose of. That's true with all the departments, uh, if they want to dispose of records. Some records by law we cannot dispose of. There are other records. Um, we have to advise the state and in some cases the, uh, the state has an archive that they may take those records and save those. Um, but in some cases we can just actually dispose of them. And there's a, depending on the record, it could be anywhere from two to three to seven to ten years before we can dispose of them. So there's a lot of those records downstairs in the basement. And what we're discussing is how to reduce the amount of records we have in storage.
And I told him I would think the commissioners could hire the shred truck that would come in and be so much easier, just do it right on site. But it will be costly because there are things down there, been down there about twelve, fifteen years. And that's kind of ridiculous. Cause we have more every, every year. We just can't find the room. So Ed's gonna get that committee and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Brand.
It is gonna be costly.
I'll, I'll be glad to be part of that. Right. Yep. So we had in our packet today, a, uh, I believe what might be the final dispersment for BW construction, uh, to the Justice Partners. This is for the mental health facility, two hundred fifty-four thousand, five hundred ninety dollars and thirty-two cents, or thirty-seven cents, sorry. Two hundred fifty-four thousand, five nine zero three, three, seven. And they're asking us to approve it. I had some back and forth with Dustin Frye, the president of BW, as well as, um, Adam Thiemann, and I asked him if there was holdback money in the, in the language until we get final documentation, as-bills, training, maintenance manuals, things like that. And Mr. Thiemann offered that we could hold back five percent of the final, of the total amount. Um, what's due here, the two hundred fifty-four thousand, five ninety, thirty-seven is only about three percent of the total contract. So I said, hey, let's just, let's hold that back. And then I got an email from Dustin Frye saying, hey, we don't normally do this with build operate transfers. We BW, we hold money back from the subcontractors, but typically with the owner, there's, there's not a holdback because in a build operate transfer, and this is true, uh, they take all the risk. So they give us a price not to exceed. And while we may memorialize changeovers, there will be no project overruns. In fact, we've seen underruns on this project that's helping pay for the Comcast and some other things. So for discussion today, do we want to hold something back? Or do we want to pay this final claim of two hundred fifty-four thousand, five hundred ninety dollars and thirty-seven cents?
I'd recommend we hold some back.
I, I don't disagree.
Yeah. I mean Comcast can find out.
Okay. So there's a submission of claim for this and I'm gonna make a motion that we hold back the two hundred fifty-four thousand, five hundred ninety dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. And I have a couple other quick updates. So as of today, uh, the county is now responsible for the risk management insurance on the mental health facility. So the builder's risk ends today and USI, who is our, our risk management insurer and their underwriter travelers, they're responsible for it. Um, also today, if you're at the Justice Center, you probably arrived to a blocked off parking lot on the south side of the, of the, uh, parking lot out there where the visitors park. I had sent a message out to the Justice Center, the sheriff and the judges and prosecutors and everybody. And I know this isn't very big, but the red area, which is the south lot, is off limits for the next two weeks. There's stormwater work gonna take place out there. So the drainage isn't, isn't quite correct. We're gonna add two inlets as well as next to the sidewalk, there's probably a hundred linear feet of sidewalk, the water ponds right there. And in the winter time, it freezes, you know, out two or three feet and people have to walk across that. So that's all gonna get fixed and it'll get milled, repaved and then restriped back to the way it is right now. Unless somebody has a complaint about the way we restripped it recently with the unloading zone and things like that. I'm, I'm good with that.
They know the ADA rules.
Yep, they are. And they added the, the handicap, uh, per the ADA. Um, we do have a road closure coming up, uh, on August seventh. It'll be down for one day. It's on East County Road five hundred north, uh, located between County Road eight fifty east and North County Road eight hundred east. Uh, this is for some utility work, uh, on the bridge, which is our structure number one hundred and three over Mud Creek. Um, just be aware, that's gonna be closed for one day. It'll be blocked off. You might wanna alter your route. Also in the county, we're looking at two, you might be familiar with the term J-turns. Uh, NDOT now has sexied that up. It's called a reduced conflict intersection. One's being considered at the Village Pantry on sixty-seven South and four hundred South. And then one at Highway three South and seven hundred South, putting in those reduced conflict, conflict intersections. And we are.
Those are, I attended the meeting. Those are.
Twenty, twenty-eight.
Yeah, those are complicated. So if anyone, um, anyone needs any information on that, let me know.
And they will have public hearings.
Yeah, that's right. And the public hearings in addition, I asked them if they would mock one up so the public could come and see. And I offered the fairgrounds as an alternative to go out and mock up a scale, um, you know, crossover and it's a J-turn, right? So basically when you come up on four hundred South and sixty-seven, if you want to go across four hundred South heading east or west, you're gonna have to go right, go down, make a U-turn and come back and turn right again. And they work well. They do reduce, uh, reduce the conflicts. Um, and they do this based on traffic data and accidents, right? I, I don't remember the name of the system, but.
I, I don't either. There is one in, um.
Noblesville.
Yeah, Noblesville.
We'd have to go to Noblesville.
Noblesville. You go to Noblesville and look at one.
So they agreed to mock one up and, and Commissioner Reagan's right, there will be, uh, some public meetings on that. But those are a few years out, so just a heads up. Also, I've had several people contact me about, uh, parks in towns. And I just want to remind everybody that that's the responsibility of the township trustee to take care of those. So I think there's one in Oakville, there's one in DeSoto, uh, there might be one in Eaton and some other places.
Maybe Shidler.
There, but those are the responsibility of the trustee. Uh, we did investigate to see if there were any funds available through grants. And they could work in a park if it was, uh, connected to redoing a community center, a town hall, a police or a fire station in those areas. That could be an OCA grant, but the, the one that I was asked about doesn't qualify. And the Norfolk Southern does have a grant if they have a line running through your town, uh, that there's about fifty thousand available. Uh, if there is a Norfolk Southern line running through.
DeSoto out.
It would help DeSoto.
It would help DeSoto. So that's a, that's a possibility. And I think that's good news. Uh, also Foundry Row, uh, on South Cowan Road, this is across from, um, ABC Building Supply, they're gonna have a groundbreaking August seventh at one o'clock on site out there. That's the new, um.
Is that four hundred and fifty units?
No, it's a hundred and twenty or a hundred and forty. Yeah. Four fifty'd be awesome, but I don't, I don't think so.
Maybe it's flat on.
Yeah. And then just a quick update on the Constellation. And two meetings ago, there was discussion about Constellation. These folks manage our utility bills that maybe some of them were being double paid. Um, investigation shows that that may not necessarily be true, but we, the auditor, myself and the Constellation and the independent third party who's charging us no money to assess this, we have a meeting coming up. I believe it's later this week, isn't it, to, to, to talk in detail about that? And that concludes my update. However, I would like to schedule an executive session.
Yeah. So, uh, we have an executive session scheduled for Thursday, August seventh at ten AM here in the county building. It will be for, um, contract review and, um, attorney consultation. So you guys have that on your calendars?
I do.
Okay.
Files are nine o'clock.
Yeah, that, that's out at the Justice Center. Yeah.
All right. Entertaining motion for, uh, recess?
So moved.
Second.
A motion for recess in a second. Ed, can you call the roll please?
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Yes. We're in recess.
Recession.